Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the December 13th regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Item one on the agenda is for Selectmen's remarks, and I will be quite brief this evening. I'd like to open this meeting with a point of personal privilege. Tonight, we're going to recognize a remarkable achievement of years in service to our town. I gave the following remarks in honor of Jerry Shaw's retirement. She's going to blow up again. Here we go.[62.76][62.76](Laughter). Monday, I called her the next morning, and I said, "Were you mad?" You'll hear why. Monday evening, at the Town Employee Holiday Gathering, I'd like to share them again with you now. This is not recognition of time spent, but rather of a remarkable contribution to Woodbridge. It is undeniably an individual achievement, but resonates with all of us as a consummate team player. It is about consistently being the go-to person for seven First Selectmen, countless town employees, and too many residents to count. I want you all to think back. It is 1975. Gerald Ford is in the White House. The U.S. is evacuating from Saigon. John Mitchell and H.R. Haldeman are being sentenced following the Watergate scandal. Saturday night live premieres, and One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest sweeps the Oscars. Captain and Tenille have a number-one hit with Love Will Keep Us Together. In 1975, the annual town budget was just $5,266,587. Just gone up a tad since then. That year, I was working in Nurseford Island and planning my wedding, and Jerry Shaw was arriving at her desk at Town Hall. I'll pause here so each of you can think about where you were and what you were doing in that year in 1975. For 48 years, Jerry has been the go-to person at Town Hall. She served in her position under First Selectmen Russ Stoddard, Nan Birdwhistle, Roger Harrison, Amy Morella, Ed Sheehy, Ellen Scalatar, and heaven help her, three terms, please, plus term, three-plus terms with me. She has been a consistent wealth of knowledge, always the diplomat, forever in good humor, perpetually prepared, and completely devoted to the task at hand. In my opinion, Jerry's photo should accompany the dictionary definition of a professional. We all recognize the void in our professional family that Jerry's retirement will create. It is with tearful eyes and a heavy heart that we acknowledge this new adventure for Jerry. Whenever one door closes, another one opens, and I know I speak for everyone here when we say we wish you a retirement filled with great learning, much laughter, faraway travels, time spent with family and friends, and a beautifully tended garden, and time to read all those books you've been setting aside for years. In Jerry's honor, the town employees collected donations, and Monday night, we purchased a, we presented her with a picture of a beautiful Sowerwood tree with a plaque commemorating her service to the town. We will be dedicating the tree next spring, when it will be planted in front of the center building. Jerry, you will be greatly missed. And now, we have one more thing for you. This is from the Board of Selectmen. We did this.[233.65][233.65](Laughter). They were all in on it. All day long, I've been trying to hide these from you. What a nightmare.[241.12][241.12](Laughter).
Congratulations, Jerry.
Every room you went in, I went in with those flowers. You ended up going in that room. You know why the Assessor's Room was closed?
That's why it was closed.
Then you had to go in there. Then you had to go in the copy room, and the flowers were, it's been, and then, when I told you that I spilled water here, the vase tipped over under my desk.[262.14][262.14](Laughter). And then, when Tony was putting them in here, I, you know, when I came back from my errand outside, I said, "I need to talk to you." I didn't need to talk to her. I was trying to cover up because we were trying to move the flowers from the Assessor's to here. You were killing me today. It was something. But anyway, we got them over there.
Thank you so much.[281.33][281.33](Applause).
Pleasant things tonight. Tonight, we're also going to honor three others who have served this town. I want to prevent an official citation first to Paul Kurikos for his service on the Board of Selectmen and previous service on the Board of Finance. Paul has consistently stepped up and served on many subcommittees whenever asked. I'm so grateful. Thank you, Paul.[311.33][311.33](Applause). On behalf of the residents of Woodbridge, I would also like to present an official citation to Dr. David Lober, thanking you and honoring you for your service to the town of Woodbridge. Congratulations and all good wishes.[328.12][328.12](Applause). And lastly, though he could not be with us tonight, in Joe Crisco's absence, I want to say we're grateful for his many years of contributions and services to the town of Woodbridge. First, as a state senator, and then as a member of the Board of Selectmen. He will be missed. And I have a citation. Don't forget to let Jerry Shaw know. I have a note here. If you can make a special meeting, the 21st, I think. You responded, David, and can you do it?
David Lober.
Okay. Can you make the 21st for, I think, what, at 5:00? We begin?
About 5:00.
Okay. And hopefully, Joe will be there, and I will give him the citation at that meeting. Thank you. I feel privileged to have spent so many years in service to the town residents while working with the most dedicated staff. And all you folks, many thanks for this wonderful opportunity. I will miss you all. Hell or drop the mic. I promise not to do that. Thank you.[385.91][385.91](Applause). Well, for sure. Okay, with that, I will go to item two on the agenda with Woodbridge Board of Education, Superintendent Von Detenza. Please join us.
I feel like we should clap for Von Detenza.
I know.[407.12][407.12](Laughter).
So, I was nine.[412.56][412.56](Laughter).
Oh, gosh.
I was in fourth grade.
So was I.
1975.
Wow. See, I'm really old.
Yes, you can. Yes, you can. While you pause, while you do the math.
I don't know, Jerry. Maybe you can.
No, I don't know. I'm calculating.
Yeah, we're old. Forget it. We're old. We got it.
Exactly.
I don't care.
I got my calculator here right now.[436.28][436.28](Laughter).
Go ahead. I'm just, uh...
It's a lot of numbers. A lot of tens places.
This will be a meeting that no one will ever forget, right? The last one of Beth, Helen, or sorry.
You know, so I always begin with our enrollment. I do want to begin by saying how much I appreciate, it's been a year, so my year anniversary was yesterday here in Woodbridge.
Now we can clap.[459.12][459.12](Laughter and applause).
And every month, I feel like I'm coming into a family meeting, and that is exactly how I feel. That is exactly how it feels when you are wishing the people around the table well and thanking them. It feels like family. So, thank you for that opportunity. I also am going to be very brief because you're going to see us again on your agenda next, and then I'm ducking back out to go to Beecher Road's fifth and sixth grade concert. Our enrollment is currently 874 students. You know, as a benchmark, on October, we reported 885 last year. So, um, no, as a benchmark, we reported 885 in October of this year. So, we have to dip down a little bit, and when we present our budget to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, I'll talk a little bit about our updated enrollment projections and how we are trending so much more positively than the rest of the state for the next 10 years, and how we have trended for the last 10 years as well, much more positively. So, people are definitely moving to Woodbridge with children. So, I'll share more about that when we come back in January. Just as an aside, if you didn't realize, with the expertise and help of Donna Kuhn and our Director of Business Services and Operations, we presented the superintendent's budget on Monday evening to the Board of Education at a special meeting, and I'd like to publicly thank Donna for her time and effort in crafting a budget earlier than we ever have before to try to give our Board of Education the time needed to reflect and pose thoughtful questions for our community to consider. Next Monday, at our regularly scheduled meeting, we will begin to work through questions the Board has about the proposed budget, and we have additional dates scheduled in early January to continue this process. So, I encourage you to listen or attend the meeting to learn more, and for those of you interested in what's the bottom line, we did present a budget with an increase of 3.89 percent with very little new in the budget and some creative reorganization to obtain needed support in certain areas. So, you can stay tuned for that. And I also want to publicly thank everybody who's rolling off this board and other boards. Your service and expertise is appreciated, and you contribute to where we are today. You know, an example of who Jerry is, is I sat down over here, and she came right over. I made you a copy of the presentation tonight. That is who Jerry is. Thank you, Jerry. And, you know, Beth has led with grace and wisdom, and it has been an honor to work with you and to get to know you as a human, and the excitement is that she's really not going anywhere, and we updated our volunteer policy, so we know where you can spend some time at Beecher Road School. And then, finally, on behalf of, you know, Beecher Road, I'd like to wish anybody who celebrates holiday, holidays this month, a time of good health, plenty of reasons to smile, and time to enjoy simple pleasures with life and family and friends.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And with that, we move on. Good segue. We have a lot of people, maybe, I guess you might, do you want to introduce the folks that are here before we do the presentation? We have a presentation from the Beeching Builder, Beecher Building Committee Report. Selectman McCreven will be presenting that, but maybe we just want to say who's here in the audience because we've got a lot of Beecher peeps here.
Sure. So, go ahead. Go ahead. So, we have Donna Kuhn, our Director of Business and Operations, of course, our wonderful Superintendent Von Detenza. I'm Lynn Piazek, Chair of the Board. Our amazing Physical Leaks Director, Vito Asparo, my former student.[705.32][705.32](Laughter). Oh, now, Jerry, get your captain labor.[711.13][711.13](Laughter). And our Vice Chair of the Board, Maria Madonna, is here. And, um, yes, representing Silver Petritelli is David Stein, and Sheila is a member of the Building Committee. Is that that?
Yep, Jackie's student.
And just to know, we have several...
Jackie's is already at the concert.[738.73][738.73](Laughter).
Just to know, we have several guests in the audience. Our First Selectman-elect, Mika Cardozo, is here. Maria will be up here next year, or pretty soon, and Farmer Steve, also joining the Board of Selectmen. So, we have, and Pendle Hamilton, what are you here for now? Our registrar of voters.
Hey, this is celebrating your final meeting.
Heavens.[763.13][763.13](Laughter). Oh, my cup runneth over. My goodness. Thank you. Okay, with that, so I'll turn it over to Sheila.
Okay. I'd like to give a quick report, very quick report. In your pocket tonight, you have meeting minutes from the last two Building Committee meetings, November 20th and December 8th. And at the December 8th meeting, we did unanimously make a recommendation to forward to you tonight, a presentation of material that David Stein will now present to you. So, without further ado, we'll have David present.
You guys in the back, feel free to take a seat because we've got a presentation. You get to see how it goes here. Thank you. We'll get to you, I promise.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and good evening again. My name is David Stein. I'm a principal with Silver Petricelli Associates, and it's obviously been a pleasure. I think it's over probably 23 years since we've been working together with Beth and with Jerry, so...
Once again, you have to say the age there, right?
Yeah.[843.43][843.43](Laughter). I will, I will, I will leave what grade I was in in 1975, but, so, with all of that, pleasure to present the work that we have been doing this fall on the Beecher project. Actually, one of our first projects that we did for the town was the roof back in, back in 2000, which I will, which I'll sort of highlight, that work that was done there on that roof, and it's still, still aging, aging well, and still within sort of right at the end of its warranty period or so forth. But we were brought in, we were brought in in the fall to evaluate the school in sort of two parts. We're going to present that to you in that manner of the roof, and then the site improvement projects. We have brought on a consulting engineer, Fuston O'Neill, that has been working with us on the site improvement project, so I'm going to be presenting the work that, the good work that they have, they have been doing. So, I'll start with our PowerPoint presentation to highlight, again, the roof. The portion that we did in 2000 basically is all that black surface. Now, there's solar panels that have been added on, and that was basically the work. About half of the school was, was fully removed and renovated back in 2000. The scope of work that we are doing here today related to the roof is what I have just roughly bubbled or highlighted in red on these two areas, so giving you sort of that, that context. This slide here just tries to give you some images of the condition of the roof. You can see temporary patchings. You can see ponding. These pictures were taken well after a rain event, and traditionally, we want to see water off that roof in less than 24 hours and not having standing water. So, just, just by a cursory review of even looking at these photos, we can clearly see that there is not adequate pitch or drainage to the drains that are highlighted around there. But the good news is we're able to resolve that with a full roof replacement. We're going to be removing all of the material, and an image that we do have shown here is the removal. We did a test cut to see the condition of the insulation and the condition of the roof deck, and from our, from our test cuts around the perimeter, we saw that the roof deck is in good condition, and that we're able to sort of reorient the roof pitch just through what we call tapered insulation or insulation that has an eighth of an inch per foot slope, and reorient the drains to give positive drainage to that. We're also going to resolve that. Now, the code has evolved over time, and even since 2000, when we did the original roof, the original portions of the roof, is we would have a secondary drainage system to accommodate if, for whatever reason, those drains clogged up. There will be an overflow drain to accommodate for that. There are existing mechanical units, as you see in this, in these two images. Those will remain in place, and they'll be flashed accordingly to, to that. All of this work will be able to seek state reimbursement. The plan is to submit that to the state after essentially your acknowledgement and Board of Finance acknowledgements of sort of committing to the project, to file for an application, which that would go to the state. These are considered priority projects. They review them essentially once a month, or within the first 10 days of the month, you submit an application. They respond roughly one to two months thereafter, and our goal is to have that approved so we could begin construction this summer, in the summer of '24. The roof area that we're tackling, in terms of square footage, is absolutely, can be accomplished in a, in a summer when the school is, the school is unoccupied. We did a testing for asbestos. The good news is there's nothing that was within the flashing, so all of this work is able to be sort of done in a routine manner. It would be competitively bid to a roofing contractor, and our goal is just to get this out on the street as soon as possible to lock those contractors and vendors in. We have developed a detailed estimate, but just for summation of this presentation, you see at the bottom right, we have an order of magnitude of $1.4 million for the work that's there, and that includes a design contingency and allowances that we anticipate. Some of the wood blocking, we would anticipate there's probably going to be some removal of some of that that may need, that we haven't been able to determine. So, we're pretty confident with that number. That would then go to the state for their review and approval. They'd review the final set of construction documents, and once we receive their approval, we'd be able to go out to, to go out to bid. So, I'll probably pause on this portion. If there's any questions on roofing, I'd be happy to take them now, and then the site pieces, just a bit more detail. So, is there any questions related to...
Any questions from the Board?
The roof insulation, is it, that is existing and...
So, the existing is a rigid, is a rigid insulation. We would be putting back a similar. You kind of see that in this photo. It's, it's yellow. We're putting back what's called a polyisocyanurate. It's a rigid board. They're fabricated in different shapes or pitches, and we basically just build it up like a puzzle to match the roof geometry, to be able to sort of force the water towards those drains. We would be replacing the drains, so there's a bit of plumbing work that takes place. We run drainage calculations to make sure that we have the capacity to meet the rainfall. Currently, we've been experiencing, you know, extensive amount of rain, so we really are conscious about spacing out those drains and giving enough positive water, but the biggest strategy is that overflow, because even with those drains, storm systems end up getting taxed, and, you know, if we could just provide a secondary pathway, that's really the best practice at this point, to just deal with the, you know, large amount of rain that we get in a very short period of time.
And once that rainwater's on the ground, how do we handle that?
Well, that's going to be the next presentation I'm going to show you because not only do you have issues related to, to the roof, there are a lot of challenges around this site related to just surface drainage. So, this is, that's why this is a two-part project, and we are recommending that these are done sort of looked as two separate projects, even though it's one school. It's more economical to just go directly to a roofer and have them address that this summer, so you'll see at the next part of the presentation, we're going to, you know, we'll talk about that and being at least managed by a separate contractor.
Is there a lot of maintenance in those drains, Ben? Or is it, are they maintenance-free?
There's always the infamous tennis ball that seems to be located at each of those drains. So, yes, the roof does require maintenance, your warranty that you will take on, which would be a, a minimum of a 20-year non-pro rated warranty as required by the state, and through that, we could actually just purchase for the same material, and installation could buy a 30-year warranty with very little difference in cost or implementation. So, we would recommend, we would just recommend that. But with that, it is required annual inspections. That could be self-performed, or some of the roofers that actually do the work and are part of the manufacturer would recommend that you just buy a maintenance plan, so they come out there, they service it, at least you have sort of an on-call roofer if there are things that take place. But we're going to talk about it in the next piece. There's a lot of trees that are very close to the roof. That causes a lot of debris that lands on the roof that's just hard to control. We're recommending tree trimming that you'll see take place there. So, yes, there is maintenance that happens. If we do get a ton of snow, we haven't had in a lot of years, but we may remember, you know, almost 10 years ago, we had a considerable amount of roof, snow on the roof that does require at times a structural engineer to come in and make sure that there aren't issues, and traditionally, they say, you know, if it's over a foot or two of, you know, you may, or two feet or so, you're probably going to want to shovel the roof off, and you have to be very careful about doing that, but it is allowed, and you just have to follow that, you know, those procedures. Okay, so I'll move on to, I'll move on to the site improvements, and the intent is not to, you know, blur your eyes with the variety of conditions, but our team has looked at, at every area around the building. The topography of Beecher is fairly aggressive from top to bottom, as you know. There is mature trees around the entire perimeter, which has a very idyllic look and feel to the building, was part of the design, but over the years, just the activity of the school and the pathways around have really just, just over time, just nature takes over, and all of that, all of that has sort of compacted and gotten so dense that it's creating enormous amount of erosion. And in these past few years, just as we experienced this past weekend of getting three inches of rain in, you know, a period of two hours, the drainage system and the pathways just simply can't handle that, and there's been a lot of erosion, which you will see in these photos. There are, there is mud and sediment that just draws across, across sidewalks. There are sidewalks, those, these are bituminous or, or blacktop sidewalks that have deteriorated over time. There are large trees that the root systems have grown under them and created tripping hazards, and then there's just simple means of egress pathways, outdoorways. Without, the one thing that you can see from here is you see red dots and orange dots and green dots. We've tried to take a approach where what is a high versus medium to low priority, or what we've described to the Building Committee as a good, better, best scenario. We recognize that really all of this needs to be done and should be done, but we're mindful of budgets and planning and how things could be done in phases, so we've tried to parse that out in our overall budget. So, in these three slides, there's a variety of conditions, each outlined and then estimated in a, in a six-page detailed estimate, to make recommendations to pathways, drainage areas, vegetation, and the parking lot or paved, paved areas throughout, throughout this. And these are, these are conditions that I wouldn't say were not maintained, but they're sort of at the end of its useful life, and just because of the density that's there of trees and vegetation and just the nature of the topography, it needs to sort of be rethought. And, you know, our strategies today of capturing rainwater, going back to your question of where do we take it when it goes to its roof, there are areas, as opposed to just simply putting stormwater in a drain, in a dry well. We're able to address those with creative ways of creating rain gardens and sort of other areas to not only slow the water down and capture it, but also filtrate it prior to sort of moving on to either a storm drain system or so forth. So, our team has developed different approaches to each of the three pages of conditions that we have identified around the, around the building. The higher priority ones are where they have conditions directly in front of doors and entryways, because those are means of egress pathways, and then others are just a little less important. That may just be a minor maintenance item or so forth. With that, the drawing that we have onto the right of what you saw, those are the dots around the perimeter, so this gives you now a good bird's eye perspective of the conditions where they list around your fairly large property. And again, the topography from top to bottom ranges, it's well over 12 feet, that slopes from top to bottom. Our proposal is to address each individual one and sort of work around the building, either in a clockwise manner or so forth, to address each of those, each of those pieces. A good part of this order of magnitude is actually the upper parking lot that you see in the orange. That accounts for about a third, almost 20% of your overall recommended budget of improvement. That parking lot is really in need of repair and improvement, accessibility, access, signage, curbing, and so forth, and that is where most of your, you know, wear and tear call it takes place on a daily, on a daily basis. The rest are smaller items that just get addressed as small projects, but a project in large. Our range of our estimate that we have presented to the committee can range from an order of magnitude of $1.6 million to about $1.45 million, about a 25% difference, and that is really just calculated based on a variety of things. Contractor, when they're bidding the project, their varying overhead profit changes, also the contingency on doing a variety of little projects... Also the contingency on doing a variety of little projects as opposed to one big project. That varies in terms of how some contractors can look for, look at it. Um, and just the, um, just the order of magnitude of having a contractor that has the resources to do a multitude of small projects. It's a little different than just tackling a large, a large project. We've also, the drawing to the left just depicts where we have looked at the trees and it may be hard to see in this image, but we've identified areas of tree trimming that can, that needs to take place because it's close to the perimeter of the building. And we, we, um, have estimated that's, you know, that could range between 25 and 32,000 or so of just getting in a expert, um, tree removal company to be able to trim that back. We, we've made the suggestion, it's impossible that some of the work could be self-performed by public works. We, we know that some of this probably does take just the expertise of a consultant or a contractor to come in to sort of do that. And we recommend that that gets done ahead of any of the two projects that are, are presented. Um, so with that, I will sort of turn it back to the group, um, related to that. I'll be happy to answer, you know, any, any questions.
Drainage is obviously a big problem here because of the slope. Um, but there were engineer drains, drainage systems in place to handle that. And they have either failed or been inadequate. Could you, uh, speak to the reason that those drainage systems haven't performed as, as expected? And how your systems will and how will, how they last?
So I'm not, so there is, there are drainage, there is a drainage pathway around the building, but it's not in a strategic way as we're trying to address it. So I wouldn't say that it was, it wasn't designed properly. I'd say they didn't address the variety of conditions that are here. And they've been sort of exacerbated over time just because of the surface area. I mean, basically that, that topsoil is so compacted and that, that happens over time, right? You see that that needs to be either sort of tilled over or softened. Everything is very sort of hard. And even the top cover that was originally intended to be grass is sort of eroded over time. Um, our strategy is to deal with it in, in different layers, okay? So when we know we have a traditional, we have a slope that's fairly aggressive, we're going to create, um, a, a funneled area that can take that large volume of water, take it to what's called riprap, which is basically just large, um, large rocks, slow that down and then let that dissipate into like a rain garden. And a rain garden is basically just like an inverted planter, but it will capture, we could put vegetation on top of it, but underneath it just has a piece that could sort of capture that water and then let it dissipate, somewhat like a dry well, but we're doing it in a, you know, in a two-step process. Right now it was simply just area drains located around the perimeter of building and that's kind of an archaic way of doing it. So I wouldn't say they did it wrong. I think that was common in the past to do it that way. Here we're just looking at the conditions and it's somewhat obvious when you walk around, especially, all the pictures that we are showing you are days in which there were rain events that we were out there. So we were able to see it sort of live and in person of how that approached. So how do we convince you that that's going to be done? This map that we had up there show each strategic location and we're addressing each of them as opposed to just sort of a pinpoint because not every corner or location was originally addressed.
Anyone have any questions for David? Yon.
So it looks like from your minutes, Sheila, that of your committee, it basically said that, uh, you would recommend, uh, the grounds private to the board of selectmen for consideration is presented. So with that.
Yes, I have a motion that we can put on the table and have some discussion. Um, so I'll read that in. So it, it, the, for tonight, a motion to approve and forward to the board of finance for appropriate action. The plan and cost estimate of the BRS site needs work submitted by Fussin O'Neil as recommended by the town building committee and presented tonight, along with the plan and cost estimate for the roof replacement work, which was submitted by Silver and Petroselli and Associates and previously approved by the board of selectmen at our November 8th meeting, of course, a middle to the state. So the two parts of the project now meet up and what this motion would do would send it to the board of finance for the next step in our process.
So you've made that motion.
That's the motion, yep.
Okay, I will second the motion. It's time to discuss.
Uh, Sheila, maybe, well, one of you can say, I saw in the, I saw in the materials that, that, uh, it was perhaps, or maybe likely that the, that the landscape work or the, or this drainage issue would not be reimbursable by the state or might not be.
Yeah, it, it would, it would, it would not be reimbursable, um, by the state. This work is considered, most of this work is considered maintenance work, which is not, would not fall under an alteration project.
Right, and so we had it kind of separate. Um, Tony has also prepared in our packet, there's a memorandum that has more detail about what the costs are for the pieces of this, including things like the insurance and, um, so borrowing costs, interest costs, the contingency, all the details, which would be part of what is going to be discussed at the board of finance.
So if I understand this correctly, it's our job to make a recommendation to approve, to approve this or to forward it now cost-wise. We, we recommend the project, correct?
Right.
And then it goes to the board of finance next week, hopefully the 21st, because they are the ones that approve the dollar amounts.
And then the board of finance will refer it back to the board of selectmen.
Right.
For a vote on the special town meeting that needs to happen because it's a bonding proposal.
Right.
So you'll get this back as soon as, probably December 21st, I don't know when.
We're going to, hopefully be there and that will happen. So, um, obviously this is something that has to get done timing-wise. And we've been talking about this rule for quite a long time and I think it's very important as well as the site work seems applicable as well because don't do one without the other or we're just, you know, spinning our wheels, I guess, from what I understand from David. So we have a motion, a second. Does anyone have questions about getting this done or going forward on this? I'd like to call the questions. All in favor of sending this to the board of finance? It's unanimous. Great, thank you so much. Thank you, David.
More talk.
Our one done. Vonda looks like she's going to fly. Good. So we'll all be at the board of finance meeting next week to keep going on this. I'm, I'm very happy this is going to get approved and hopefully we'll get the special town meeting done quickly so they can get this started for next summer. So thank you all. No, thank you guys. Great work.
Thank you.
Okay, item four on the agenda is, let's see if we can get our book here. Thanks, Sheila, by the way, for getting this all worked out. We have an Eagle Scout presentation this evening and we have with us, thank you for being patient, come on up. You just have to make sure you speak into the mic so they can hear you. Thank you. I will, I pronounce your name for me. Andrew Mung is here from 241. He has a presentation. We like Eagle Scout projects because they get stuff done for our town, so thank you. Yeah, you want to share? You need that? Something written on it? So, one of them has written on it. He needs to find that. You got it? We're all friendly, don't worry, we don't bite.
Uh, hi, I'm Andrew Mung.
Hello.
Um, with 241. Uh, today I'm here to seek permission to work on Woodbridge Town property. Uh, so my project would be undertaking an Eagle Scout project that involves the replacement of boards, um, at the Playton Swamp Boardwalk. Uh, so right now the current boards are in various stages of decay, making the walkway unsafe. So we would remove the boards and also reinforce lower walkway depending on the conditions of the removed boards. Uh, removing these boards would not only improve the safety of the trail, but also ensure continued accessibility of the unique natural area. Um, so I have pictures of the trail, of the upper walkway, and then I also have a map of the area. Uh, the address is 236 Noon Road and it's located on Seymour Road and, uh, near the intersection of Sanford and Seymour. Uh, the raised walkway is 30 span with, um, 60 boards total of a two-by-tens, which are around eight feet long. Uh, so my project goal would be removing the deteriorated boards and putting in new sturdy weather resistant, uh, boards and also ensuring the safety of visitors by ensuring the walkway is in good condition. And my timeline is to be doing a project in around January or this December, most likely January of next year. Um, so materials of the project, um, the two-by-tens, uh, which are, uh, ground pressure treated planks from Oxford lumber, uh, stainless steel, uh, screws and also safety equipment. My workforce would be mostly my troop, but also local people such as my friends and family. Um, I have gotten approval for the budget and property owners, the land trusts. Um, here today to get permission to work on, uh, Woodbridge land. And next week I will be going to see if I need a permit for, um, with the inland wetlands committee. Uh, safety, safety measures. So I have demonstrations with my scouts and the workforce, making sure that there's protective personal equipment and also safe construction practices, which will be strictly followed. Um, the budget, which is, um, also on the table on the next page, um, is the estimated cost of the project, which have been approved, but, um, basically consists of around a thousand dollar budget of the boards plus other fees, which totaled around $1,200, which have already been approved by the land trust and funded by. Um, my execution of the project, so we organized workdays to replace the boards. Um, and basically we'll have it so that it'll be two teams working inside out. Because it's such a narrow space, we want to make sure that there's two groups to ensure that we're able to get all the work done in one day. But also make sure we have coordination between the two groups because it is a very narrow walkway and communication is very important. So my conclusion basically is that the replacement of the boards on the swamp walkway is a meaningful project. As I am a person from Woodbridge, I've lived in the area and I've walked on the trail since I've been a kid. Um, it's a meaningful project that helps align principles and values of Boy Scouts, but, and it not only helps the local community, but also contributes to the preservation of the environment. I'm committed to a successful execution of this project and welcome any support, guidance and approval from my scout leaders.
Thank you so much. Um, you have a guest with you?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Zach, please.
Hi. Welcome, thank you. Um, and with that, um, I will ask any of the board members if they have any questions.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, when do you age out?
Uh, I age out in February.
Okay, so there's a little pressure to get this done.
Yeah.
Um, the second thing is, you may or may not know about this, Home Depot is very generous to Boy Scout projects. They often donate their materials. Have you looked at that?
Uh, I've not. Um, the land trust is, has an account with the Oxford lumber and that's their supplier of, um, wood.
Yeah, but you might get it free from Home Depot. I'm not saying that they will, but in my experience, they've been very generous in donating materials to Eagles, Eagle Scout projects.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Look at that, yeah.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay, great. Um, with that, I will make a motion, um, or actually, may I have a motion to approve Andrew Mung's Eagle Scout project pending the securing of the necessary inland wetlands approvals and permits?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any comments, questions, suggestions?
I would just say that you've already mastered the techniques here that, that go into doing any interaction with the government. So very good. Your presentation was excellent.
Well done. Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Item five on the agenda is the Massaro grant, Massaro Farm authorized the first electing to execute the landlord consent form for the 2023 Connecticut, growing for Connecticut kids grant project. And we have with us farmer Steve this evening. Couple of hats on tonight, eh?
Yes. Uh, thank you for having me. So yes, this is a, a grant proposal from the State Department of Agriculture. It's a farm-to-school grant and the idea of the grant is, uh, to increase the amount of produce going from Connecticut farms into Connecticut schools. Our proposal is to take advantage of the shipping container aspect of this grant, which is a, a special one-year opportunity to, uh, receive up to $250,000 of funding to purchase and install a shipping container growing system. We are proposing to grow culinary mushrooms in that shipping container, uh, which will add diversity to our, um, items, allow us to grow them year-round and then offer them both to schools and to our other, uh, sales outlets as well. Uh, we've talked with local schools and secured some interest, including, um, the technical high schools that have culinary programs. That's the basics of it. Uh, we'll keep the container, you know, within, it's about 200 feet from electric and water services, so we'll need to, um, have that access and we will need, you know, appropriate permits and such, uh, to move this forward.
Any questions on this?
How many, how many pounds of mushrooms do you expect to grow each year?
So I think in '24, um, I don't expect we would have much. I think 2024 would be, uh, mostly prep year and this has a, the grant has a two-year honor, it's 24 months to completion. So my hope is that we would have the container in place in October of '24. We'd start testing our systems in November of '24 and we'd have production, uh, by spring of '24. But I think our availability, if we were to maximize the, the space, you know, up to 500 pounds a week. But I think, you know, we would want to taper our way up there. You know, you can grow different varieties, but different, some different varieties need different conditions. So we need to sort of choose and then strategize and make sure that we have outlets for 500 pounds, uh, before we grow 500 pounds per week. Uh, but we are working closely with, uh, Seacoast Mushroom, based in Mystic, which they're kind of the leader in this. Um, so we will be purchasing the shipping containers from them on, based on their designs, uh, and working with them. So they were a neighbor of ours at the farmer's market. Uh, we've worked with them over the years and so we'll be relying on their expertise to, um, bring that, uh, production out to our farm.
To make sure we, oh, go ahead.
It's my understanding of this program that it, it is a, it does not require a matching grant or anything from, it's, it's just a straight-up grant.
Yep, straight-up grant, uh, zero cost to the town and actually in a rare circumstance, it doesn't require our match either. So, um, there's no funds from Massaro that needs to go out for this year.
Anything else? So to make sure we got it all correct, uh, town council has given me the correct motion, so I'll read that now. I hereby move that the board of selectmen authorize the first electman to sign the landlord's consent letter for a grant application to the Connecticut Agricultural Commission for the Massaro Community Farm, quote, "Growing culinary mushrooms for Connecticut schools," unquote, project. This authorization is contingent on town plan and zoning approval persistent to section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes and approval from all other applicable Woodbridge land use boards and commissions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Any comments on the motion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
There's a one question. How's your goat project going?
Uh, it's going well. We've made progress. Uh, the land, you know, that we were planning to reshape, that work has been done and, uh, we expect to bring goats back on the farm in the late spring.
Yeah, it's in there. Do we need a motion? Do we need a motion for the 824?
Yeah, you do, you hereby move the Massaro Farm proposal, planning and zoning for an 8, 8, uh, 24 review.
Okay, I'll make that motion. Is there a second? Thank you.
And that's going to be, I changed that letter.
Any questions or comments on that? All in favor? 824, thank you. 10 of 6. Okay, Jerry, I'm going to fold this motion up that Jerry gave me and put it in the book. It's not this one. It's this one. Okay, great. It's under number five. Okey-dokey. Um, item five on the agenda, no, we just did number five. Item six, usually I skip things, now I'm going back, whoa. Item six on the agenda is a request for an oversight, oversight sign at Acorn Hill Road Ball Field. Dwight Rolland, president of Bethwood Baseball, is here this evening, AKA Santa.
AKA Santa.
Getting ready? Getting ready? Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for allowing us to come tonight. We don't have an entrance sign up at our Acorn Hill complex, which is located at Acorn Hill Road Extension, which is adjacent to the, uh, town, you know, dump up there. And, uh, we had a past member of our board, Brian Lucien, recently passed away. And he was an unbelievable, great guy in the community, did a lot. Plus, he also served on our board and was a coach and manager for many, many years in office of the league. We had a family in town, the Winers, uh, call. And Mike was a really good friend of Brian, coached Brian and traveled with him with his teams. Their, their kids played together. And they wanted to do something in Brian's memory to help the league. One of the things we don't have is really a sign. Most of the leagues that we travel to throughout the state have a nice signed welcome to, like, Acorn Hill Complex or whatever it is. So we, we, uh, this is something that Mike and his wife Cheryl would like to do for us. I, I sent along a draft of what the, a sketch of what the sign will look for, look like. It's gonna be four feet tall by eight feet long. It will be mounted on posts. And because it's an oversight sign, we're gonna have to go to, uh, planning and zoning. So for us to do that, uh, I'd like to have your authorization, one, to allow us, because you are the owners of the property, to allow us to install the sign at that location. And secondly, we need a waiver from the Board of Selectmen on the, of the application fee, as allowed by Section two twenty-five dash seven of the Woodbridge Town Ordinances, so.
Any comments or questions for Dwight? I, I will say.
I did have one question, not, not necessarily for Dwight, but about this. As I read through, at least in my packet, this, the sample letter that says, it describes the installation as, as a northeast corner of the intersection of Acorn Hill Road and Acorn Hill Road Extension, but that isn't what you requested in your letter.
No, it's gonna be.
So I didn't, I didn't want us to send a letter forward that had the wrong location on it.
No, it's not. It's gonna be right at the entrance, so.
I, I, I figured that out from looking at it.
Right, you look at it.
And from your letter. But, but, but the description.
Right before you get to the transfer station. So you make a left and it'd be right there.
If this is the letter that goes with it.
This is just a sample letter.
We've got a different.
We need to tweak it. We need to send it on our letter.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding.
No, I agree.
No, thanks. That's all.
What are the small words at the bottom of this?
It says, "In memory of Coach Brian Lucien."
This is a lovely idea.
The Winers didn't want their name on it. I, I offered, they said, no, listen, this is just for Brian. This is something we want to do to honor his memory, so.
So keeping us honest and legal. Attorney Weiner has again prepared a motion, which I hope I can read, because I haven't read it yet. Your writing is something. I hereby move that, one, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission waive the application fees. No, the town isn't, aren't we waiving the fees? Not them.
Well, it, it's, it, you're part of the town. Yeah, we move that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission waive the application fees pursuant to Section twenty-two twenty-five dash seven.
Okay, sorry to read, all right, so they will waive the fees, okay. I hereby move that the town, number one, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission waive the application fees pursuant to Section two-two-five dash seven of the Woodbridge Town Ordinances. Number two, approve the request to install a permanent sign at the Acorn Hill Road Ball Field, contingent on approval by the Town Plan and Zoning Commission pursuant to Section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut General Statutes, and receipt of all other required Woodbridge Land Use Agency approvals for installation of the sign.
Good job.
Writing, um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So this implies that we're going for an eight twenty-four as well, or do we have to make a second?
We do another motion.
Okay, all right, so we'll do this one first. Any comments or questions on this first motion?
I just had a quick question about the, the phrasing. I, I noticed at the allegedy field, it says allegedy, um, field complex or something to that, um, sort of. And I wondered if you would put that, consider putting that in, in this sign. This is just a draft of what it's gonna look like?
So what we, I don't know what you're.
The athletic complex or something to indicate that it's a set of fields, right? Because it just says, "Welcome to Acorn Hill." Athletic fields.
I mean, we could, athletic, where, Acorn Hill?
Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of the other signs that we have, which I think is only.
She said athletic complex. Put the word athletic in there so people know it's ball field.
We could probably do that. I could probably do that.
Just, just a thought, so that it, it sort of looks like it belongs with the other athletic fields in town. I guess we don't have permanent signs on anything but allegedy though.
Yeah.
And now this. So thank you. Thank you in your organization.
Yeah, there's nothing down at center, is there? There's nothing at center of all fields, is there? No signs?
There really isn't.
I'm sorry?
Is there a sign down on center?
No.
Just, we're just asking.
No, no, there's no sign anywhere else.
Well, maybe there'll be some future projects.
There we go.
Wonderful, thank you.
With that, um, I will call the question. All in favor? Thank you. And now I'll make a motion that we, uh, forward this to Town Plan and Zoning for an eight twenty-four review and hopeful approval.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments on that? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Dwight. Well done. That's a great thing.
Thank you. I'll see you Saturday.
Of course. I'll be there with my s- Mrs. Claus suit.
Are you gonna let Chris talk? Do you send these to her directly?
I'll take care of sending them.
Jerry makes, Jerry makes the magic happen. Okay, wonderful. You have a couple more. Okay, so that's done. Are we close enough to do public comments?
Yes. Yes.
Two minutes up. If anybody walks in.
They'll take it after.
All right, is there any?
Did you notice that that woman continued down the hall?
Yes.
Good. There's another meeting going on in the conference room.
Oh. Put that light back on. I feel like I'm in the dark here. I'm old. We've established that tonight.
It'll damage your vision here.
Thank you. All righty, thank you very much. Okay, is, uh, Jerry, did you receive any public comments by three P M. today?
I did not.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to, uh, give public comment? Yes, okay, thank you. And now we move on to item eight, Administrative Officer Director of Finances Report, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Genovese.
Thank you. The, um, I have your, your, your report through, uh, November of twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, and that's an estimated year-end surplus of nine eighty-five, two sixty-one. Uh, because the budget, uh, has an allocation of fund balance of eight hundred thousand dollars, it would be a slight increase to our fund balance at the end of the year, which would be at nine million dollars or about sixteen percent of our expenses. Uh, a couple of highlights for you. Uh, first is, um, our interest income, um, continues to do well and is above our budget, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our current earnings rate is approximately five and a half percent, a little less. Uh, our intergovernmental revenues, um, we received two hundred and forty thousand dollars from the state's, um, surplus revenue sharing account. That's an account that's, um, tied to, uh, uh, sales tax receipts. And so we don't really know, um, how much we're getting during the budget process until the sales tax receipts are calculated, and then it funds a variety of programs. And this is one of the ones that get, gets funding at the, sort of the tail end of the, of the, uh, formula. And so, uh, we received funding from that, um, our revenue sharing account this year. But we, and our expenses, our, uh, retirement system has a savings of about a hundred thousand dollars. We've discussed that previously. And finally, AMIDY has a surplus of four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one sixty-three, which they anticipate, uh, reducing our March payment. So those are the sort of the four major items in our budget this year.
Any questions for Tony on that? Okay, thank you. Moving on, uh, funding requests. First one is, uh, okay, moving, the first funding request we have is, uh, funding request number two-three-two-four-dash-ten in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. I'll move acceptance of that. Is there a second? Thank you. I will open it up for discussion or maybe an explanation about what happened here. Um, you have in your packet, I guess, a copy from the, uh, I'm sorry, a memo from the chief, the fire chief, that the units, uh, they, this is a request for an emergency replacement of an air separator in the boiler room of the fire department. The unit supplies heating for the entire building.
So they had no heat?
Yeah. Had to get done quick, fast and in a hurry, so they had to do that. And unfortunately.
Firemen are tough.
What'd you say?
Firemen are tough. They need heat.
Yeah. It's clearly the unit is vital as it supplies heating for the firehouse. We had that memo. So unfortunately, we have to dip into contingency a little bit.
Little bit.
But what are you gonna do? So it has to get fixed. So we have a motion and a second, I think, on that. Any comments or questions on this? All in favor? Thank you very much. And the next one is funding request number two-three-two-four-dash-eleven in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. I will, I had to do some math to figure this out, but it, we're actually worked. Finally, I understand, okay. Each assessment from SCROG is seventeen five hundred and fifty, and we're doing three of them, correct? Which gives us a total of fifty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
And you divide that in half, um, because we're paying half and they're paying half.
Right.
Twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Are you proud? I did this all by myself, and then wait for it. And then the town is receiving a discount of thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight hundred dollars for previous assessment performed by the National Guard, which brings us to this total of twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. Had to be done. I couldn't figure out. I had to make, it's a little scratch pad over here trying to figure out how did we get to this number? So with that, I will motion approval of this funding request. It sounds like we really need a site. This, you can't go wrong.
So it's, uh, we'll give a little background here.
Okay.
So the capital regi-, uh, the, uh, Southern Connecticut Region Council of Governments received a grant to perform a comprehensive, it's a comprehensive cybersecurity program, um, which, um, the first part of that program is to do an assessment. And then the, the program is to, um, provide assets to all of the member towns. Uh, that includes New Haven, Milford, um, West Haven, Orange, this, how many towns, you know, how many towns, SCROG?
Uh, fifteen.
Fifteen. It's fifteen area towns. And so, um, the grant pays for half of the cybersecurity assessment for, um, all of the towns. So we have three distinct networks here in town, and so each network has a sep-, will have a separate assessment. And, um, we'll run a range of, um, of, uh, tests on the network, try to penetrate the network, try to find if there's any, uh, gaps or, uh, and I can tell you from, um, knowing a little bit about this topic, you can never be too safe or secure about this stuff, so.
It's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
You know, we have stuff all the time that happens, and anything we can do to make ourselves more secure, because the bad guys are out there.
And I would say, correct.
It's awful. We had some breaches already.
And I would also say that, um, we have our cybersecurity insurance coverage, and it becoming, um, they're getting a lot tighter on that coverage in terms of what we have to have in place in order to protect our networks. So, um, I think this, um, initiative from SCROG is an excellent idea, particularly for a town like Woodbridge, some of the smaller towns in the, uh, region that really don't have I T. departments or I T. staff. Um, it's, it's a very valuable, um, resource for us.
Smaller towns make actual targets.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, exactly, yeah.
Right.
Because they figure there's no professional there, so.
So with that, um, I will move acceptance of funding request number two-three-two-four-dash-eleven for the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars as discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Any other comments on this? Call the question. All in favor? Thank you very much. So glad we're doing that.
Me too.
Yep, okay. I think that's all for funding requests.
That's it.
Okay. And then we have item C, um, authorization to lock in the full fuel, oh, boy, fuel, gas bids. Maybe you want to talk about this a little bit, Tony?
Sure. The town, um, the town runs a, um, a regional, um, bid for fuel oil, for diesel fuel, gasoline, and, um, we do, uh, heating oil as well, although we don't use heating oil, uh, because we have natural gas in our facilities. But there are a few of our, um, uh, the towns around us, it's, um, the town of Woodbridge, Woodbridge Board of Education, um, the Orange Town, Orange Board of Ed, Help Me Out, AMIDY.
AMIDY and Region sixteen.
Region sixteen. Those are all the participants. So we, um, we run the bid process for that, and when we, uh, bid, uh, commodities, it's typically good for, it's a, it's a, we usually get like a, it's like a floating rate, so you have to like lock it in as soon as you award, you know, open the bids. The rates don't last long, because it's always moving on the, on the commodity market. So, um, our goal is to lock in pricing for the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So we could, we don't have time to like get the pricing, come back, get the, because the pricing will expire.
It's gone if we wait until the next board meeting, so.
Yeah, the vendors are, um, signing their cards just before we open the bid to put in the rate.
Yeah.
That's in effect right now.
Right.
Right, yeah, so I stayed by the phone.
Right.
Tony says we're doing it right now, and I have to wait by the phone, and he gives me the call, and I say, yep, it's okay with me. So it's kind of exciting. You feel like you're in a movie or something. Anyway, any comments or questions on the, we do this, how often, every year?
Once a year.
Once a year, yeah, so. So with that, I will make a motion, um, actually, may I have, I can't do this one, because it's me. May I have a motion to authorize the First Selectmen and the Administrative Officer Director of Finance to lock in the gasoline, diesel, and fuel oil bill, bid most advantageous to the town?
It's next Tuesday, by the way.
Next Tuesday.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Zipping along here. Wait for it, my last time. Do you have any other other?
No.
No other other? Okay, thanks. All right, next on the agenda is the Personnel Committee Report, and action is appropriate. Um, let's see. The Personnel Committee met on December fourth, uh, with me, Selectmen, uh, Paul Kierikos and Selectmen Dr. David Lovren were there. And, um, we had a discussion regarding a replacement for Mrs. Shaw, who is, as we've all learned, is retiring from the position of Executive Assistant to the First Selectmen. I will add that this is a position that is customarily, although it hasn't happened for a long time, um, uh, recommended by the, uh, First Selectmen-elect or the current First Selectmen, and as Jerry's retiring. Um, Mr. Cardoza was there and discussed his request to recommend Allison Val Salmas for her position, for this position. She is available to be in working part-time to train with Mrs. Shaw before, before Mrs. Shaw retires on January second, twenty twenty-four. And I can report that the Personnel Committee voted unanimously, uh, to, to recommend to the Board of Selectmen this evening that the position of Executive Assistant to the First Selectmen be offered to Allison Val Salmas beginning January second, twenty twenty-four, with a unanimously approved amendment that she, the suggested salary will be presented to the Board of Selectmen for discussion on our meeting, and you have that number now?
It's, uh, sixty-one thousand two hundred dollars.
Okay. So with that, I will, before we start discussion, I will make a motion that we do that, as I just discussed. Is there a second? Thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, great. And let's see, what's next? Oh, yeah, wait a minute. Do we have that in here? What did I forget? I'm totally blocking it.
Personnel, previous personnel.
Previous one.
Tom Clark?
Tom Clark.
Oh, yes, thank you. That's why this is in here, sorry. Oh, man, okay. Another item that we have to act upon is that, um, this happened at the November twenty-ninth meeting of the Personnel Committee. We had, Woodbridge Center Director, um, we were, we, the Personnel Committee received a request from Human Services Director Jeanette Glicksman to award the Woodbridge Center Director a one-time stipend. Following discussion of this information, the Committee voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the Woodbridge Center Director, Kristi Moriarty, be awarded a one-time stipend of three thousand five hundred dollars for service above and beyond her position. And Jeanette, at that time, had presented to us that this, Kristi did an enormous amount of. And Jeanette, at that time, had presented to us that this, Kristi did an enormous amount of, uh, work uh, prior to this, uh, prior to us awarding this stipend. During the construction, um, she had, she had two, um, folks that, actually, maybe it was just one. She had hired a, uh, the first one left. She had an assistant who left. And then she had another assistant who, for whatever reason, didn't stay too long. So that, that ended up happening. Kristi, in the middle of all this, was stuck with trying to manage all this and she did a pretty good job. Actually did an excellent job, so. And then all during the construction, Kristi took on a lot of extra time. And I believe she had spent something like, uh, if we were to pay her for her extra time, it would have been about six thousand, five hundred dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
Something like that. So this award is for a one-time stipend of three thousand, five hundred dollars for her service above and beyond, um, her position. So with that, I will make a motion that we approve a one-time stipend to Kristi Moriarty of three thousand, five hundred dollars for her service.
A second?
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? Thank you. And then lastly, um, we received, uh, a request from the Town Clerk's Office uh, that over, Ms., uh, Stephanie has been out for a while and, uh, dealing with some things. And she's coming back actually Monday, I believe, so that's exciting. I know, very, very good news. But, um, all during the election, Stephanie was not here. And as you know, we had a one-time, very, very busy election in November, now that we're in November. And the Deputy Town Clerk, Karen Bertram, and the, uh, two Assistant Town Clerks, Kimberly Rowe and Susan Castelot, stepped up and did it all without Stephanie sort of guiding her from home, but it was very hard and they did a wonderful job. So Stephanie asked that the Personnel Committee approve, um, a one-time stipend of two Deputy Town Clerk, Karen Bertram, of fifteen hundred dollars, Assistant Town Clerk, Kimberly Rowe, and Assistant Town Clerk, Susan Castelot, Castelot, the last two at a thousand dollars each. And by the way, I should say that both of these numbers of, this, this money is in each budget. So we're not spending money from anywhere other than the budget. The one from the senior center was from, uh, that's in Jeanette's budget in the Town Clerk's office. She has the money in her budget to do this. So the Personnel Committee voted unanimously on November twenty-ninth to approve these stipends. So I will make a motion that we approve these one-time stipends as discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you, okay. Thank God, I forgot all about that. It's in here and I just, la-la. Okay, item ten on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. I will make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda. Is there a second?
I just need to pull one item.
Okay, never mind.
The minutes of November twenty-one. So I'll second the motion to approve with the exception of the November twenty-one minutes.
Okay, so item A, Part One, the regular meeting minutes. Acknowledge the receipt of the Town Clerk's report and the receipts of recognition of Steve Mono and Andrea Urbano from Agriculture. So with that, all in favor? Aye. And then we're pulling out the minutes of November, November twenty-first, 'cause I'm assuming you have a correction or something in addition, so.
Yes, just a very brief correction at the bottom of page one. The first motion, uh, with regard to commencement date of terms of elected officials. Um, when I read that motion, I had included at the end of it the same phrase that ends up as a friendly amendment in the next motion, but just that, we're clarifying that all such terms will begin on January one going forward rather than July one. Um, just because I think we had a concern at that meeting, um, about how quickly the charter revision might happen. So just inserting that phrase at the end of that, uh, motion.
Got that, Jerry? Anybody have any questions about that?
Yeah.
So is this?
Go ahead, sure.
So is this motion already on file with the Town Clerk now? So we're gonna have to change, I mean, we're gonna refile it or something?
Right. How do you do that, Jerry?
Well, I got filed draft minutes, then I file approved minutes.
Okay.
So this is taken down, approved minutes are put up.
Got it.
So it's, uh, if, that is your amendment, where I have amendment, Ms. McCrevan, blah, blah, that will also be added to.
To the, the motion.
Commencement date of terms of elected officials.
Okay.
Correct. So I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay. Of the November twenty-first minutes.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three. Is there a second? Thank you, David. All right. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. Boom.
No report, nada.
Town Council's report is on the agenda. And with that, have a good time. Oh, no, motion to adjourn. For the last time. I'll make that motion.
You make the motion, I'll second it.
Thank you.
How about that?
All in favor? Non-debatable. Thank you all.
Thank you.